I worked.
I had a couple of green ones.
Well, what was it?
I might be running late.
Yes.
I don't know what I did.
JB, you did that?
But anyway, I'll just let you. Just back in there for you because I.
How many?
Thank you.
My goodness. You get there.
You don't want me talking to nobody, don't send me a message. I don't know why it does or how it does. I don't remember. Hey, bro, I don't remember.
Me and Ken got the same birthday date.
How are you doing?
I'm about eight years older than her. I'm going to leave him in a moment.
So quiet.
Yes, quite. It's too quiet.
Yes.
I think so. I got six thirty.
I was called the, uh, May twelfth, school board meeting to order. At this time, we'd asked everyone to stand for the pledge. I don't think we have a class, so I'm going to get the pledge lead tonight. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Miss Arnold, do you mind opening prayer?
I don't mind at all. Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Lord, I pray that you'll touch this board meeting, Lord. I pray that you'll touch all the students, community members, faculty and Anderson three, Lord, that you'll be with each of the board members as we make the decisions that impact our community. I pray that you put your loving arms around all of us, give us wisdom and discernment as we make the decisions to plan for our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We ask this in your heavenly name. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, this time, I need the approval of the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additions? Here none? Have a motion, Mr. Bolt, I mean, uh, Mr. Holbrook? Second from Mr. Burdette, all in favor? Five, uh, I hope each one of you has had the opportunity to look at the minutes from the last board meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Make a motion, approve minutes as presented.
Have a motion, Mr. Bolt Knight?
Second.
Second from Miss Arnold, all in favor? Five, uh. All right. Accommodation time. Fun time.
Problem the, my favorite part of the meeting is to recognize outstanding students. And tonight, we also get to recognize some outstanding retirees. But students always come first, so we'll start with our students. First of all, tonight, we want to recognize, I'll say several gentlemen and one young lady. Okay? So we're going to start with our wrestlers who have some phenomenal achievements. First of all, we'd like to recognize JB Tripp. JB was a three A state champion and a three A all-state recognition. This is actually the second time JB has won the state championship in his weight class. And I think his freshman year, he was third in the state in his weight class. So that's a phenomenal accomplishment, and we're proud of JB for his continued success. Okay, and JB, if you'll just stay up there as we call the other ones up too, but you can go ahead and move to the side. Yeah, right, there's good. Okay, then we have Luke Gray, who was a twenty, twenty-five, three A state runner-up and three A all-state wrestling. We also have Jesse Howard. Jess. Not here. Who was a three A state runner-up and three A all-state wrestling. Next one is James Gray. Three A state third place and three A all-state wrestling. And Trabari Lee. Three A state fourth place and three A all-state wrestling. Okay, before we get a picture with them, I just want to say, I know that all of these young men, wrestling is a year-round sport for them. And they put in a tremendous amount of hard work. And so I'm excited to see that hard work pay off for them, and I know it will continue to pay off for them. Okay, our young lady is, uh, we, probably in the last two years, maybe, started an archery program at Iva Elementary. And she went to regionals? Nationals in Louisville. See, she's advanced so far, so she's a national archery qualifier. And the first part of June, she will go to Merrill Beach and compete in the world championship for archery. So, Rowan Wadington. To recognize you and commend you for outstanding work.
Good morning.
Mr. Powell and Mr. Hall, y'all will come up as her coaches.
My sister's daughter was shot in archery. She was in the hospital.
Yeah, I stayed once.
And again, I just want to commend our students and their parents for the hard work and grandparents, because I know it's a commitment on everyone's part. When students excel like this, they do not do it by themselves. And so, uh, coaches, teachers, but parents and grandparents play a huge role in that. So thank you for supporting them. At this time, we're also going to recognize our. Oh, what happened to that? Sorry.
I thought that was funny.
Yep. I apologize, I did not mean to leave out the basketball player. So, uh, Josiah Davis, if you will come up. Three A, all-state basketball. I, I will say that, that this year, I had the pleasure and hadn't had this pleasure in a long time to go to a playoff men's basketball game at home. So that's moving in a great direction there with that. So congratulations on that accomplishment. All right, now we have nine retirees we'd like to recognize. We have a few more in the district than nine, but we always like to do a special recognition for anyone in the district who has been with us more than fifteen years. And so when you look at some of these years up here, you can tell that our retirees here have been here a long time. I counted up, this is two hundred and twenty-nine years of experience that we're losing in, in our office and in the bus office. And in one of our schools, who's been in several of our schools. And so these folks will be hard to replace. And I'll also just have to admit to you, I've been in their office twenty years in the district office, and when I came here, I was the youngest person in the district office. I won't tell you what's about to happen, okay? But you can figure it out. So let's start with seventeen years of, of service to James Walker.
I drive my baby to school.
Okay, and then we have nineteen years of service, Philip Jones. Twenty-two years of service, I call this years of experience, but it's kind of both. Zelphia Coker. I tried to do this so neatly. Twenty-three years of service, Mary Constantine. I have to tell you, Mary is the one that keeps me straight most of the time. Twenty-six years of service, Sandra Lawless. Twenty-eight years of service, Emily Gerard. Twenty-nine years of service, Lindy Shaw. Thirty-one years experience, Tammy Boggs. And our grand prize winner. Thirty-four years experience, Donna Garner. And just so that you'll know why we appreciate this group so much, with this group, we got paid, the bills got paid, we knew our benefits, we hired people. The buses run every day efficiently and with entertainment. So, because this is a very fun group. So, uh, thank you for your service and let's get a picture real quick. And as I always say to our retirees, you're welcome to come back on the sub-list, so we'll be glad to sign you up. I want to thank you all for coming tonight to be commended and to be recognized. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like to. But if not, it's, now would be an appropriate time for you to exit. But thank you for coming.
Yours in what, September? Yeah, you and Mark Defoe was about the same time, I think. Johnny McCarroll. No, that's too, that's too young. Way too young. All righty. What we had now? No citizens come, yeah? Mr. Matthew Moore, we gonna let you? Go ahead and get started.
All right. Thank you, sir. So. Get started taking a look at our proposed FY twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget. Front of you, we got a proposed budget of thirty-two million, two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. That constitutes a total budget increase of two million, ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, or six point nine seven percent budget increase. From a legislative perspective, really the only significant change that we've learned out of Columbia i- is that we are taking on a health insurance increase on the employer side of four point six percent. That got introduced on the, on the senate side, and then the house has agreed with that portion of, of the budget. So that, that cost is going to run around seventy-five thousand dollars approximately. We do have an estimated, I'm estimating about fifty thousand dollars in fund, additional funding to come with that. However, I have not received any sort of updates from the state on that. That's, that's more of a projection at this time, but we'll, we'll definitely communicate that as that information comes through. But the, the plus side of that is that there is no longer talks of an employee increase. So I know that was talked about early on on the house side, but that, that's no longer in play and it's employer only. And then also want to get out in front of there, there's no millage in- increase requested in this budget as well. The budget factors here, these are the same as what we talked about last month, just showing you where we budgeted based on enrollment numbers for the current year's budget and where we're projecting to budget off of for our state aided classrooms calculation using our enrollment numbers for this year. And this is a reduction based, a reduction from our actual numbers on the hundred and thirty-fifth day. But as you can see there, budgeting an extra sixty-five weighted pupil units and a reduction in index tax paying ability. Both are, are factors that were in our favor on that state aided classrooms calculation. We still don't have statewide numbers at the hundred and thirty-fifth day, so that, that's one piece of the calculation that we don't know yet, we're still waiting on. But the preliminary numbers statewide appear to be a slight decrease from the forty-fifth day. We saw a decrease from the forty-fifth day, so hopefully if we do get negatively impacted, it, it would be minimal since they're kind of trending in the same direction as we are. Could be at a different percentage though. But that's, that's one thing we're waiting on, but don't expect, I wouldn't expect it to be a significant increase. And then the last one is the value of a mill there, still holding steady, a two thousand dollar increase per mill, up to thirty-five thousand dollars, and still feel like that's a good conservative number to use. I don't know if you've seen the issues with the state aided classrooms calculation kind of in the news is, is spreading out. There, there's, there's definitely some issues with the formula. I've been on record saying it's a very difficult formulated graph, there's a lot of moving pieces separating between traditional schools and charter schools and how that gets broken out. So it's definitely become an issue this year, and it came to light when the state set aside a hundred and twelve million dollars to fund these teacher raises. The fifteen hundred dollar teacher raise on the state statewide minimum salary schedule. Fifty point seven of that a hundred and twelve million is, was earmarked to go to charter schools and the other sixty-one point two going to traditional schools. And that is due to the add-on weights that charter schools receive. They get additional add-on weight for brick and mortar, mortar schools, and then a, a different one for virtual schools. So, um, so they, they've got, so just kind of put in perspective, forty-five percent of the allocation, the additional allocation for these teacher raises going to charter schools, the other fifty-five going to traditional schools. Seven and a half percent of the students in the state go to charter, another ninety-two and a half go to traditional. So clearly, there's a flaw in the system with that, and the folks at SCAS have really taken this head on the past month and, and trying to spearhead an effort to at least put a Band-Aid on the situation. And the Band-Aid right now appears to be reducing one of, one of those add-on waitings for the virtual charter schools. The house has adopted it since then, the conference committee will have to settle it up. But that does get it back kind of in better alignment with where it ultimately should be in, based on historical increases in the distribution between charter schools and traditional schools. So I'd hope to see a, a little bit of increase on our allocation if that were to get pushed all the way through. But again, when you're distributing that statewide, how much of it actually trickles down to Anderson three may not be substantial, but that's something that's going to get monitored. And it looks like there's probably going to be a task force to evaluate and relook at this, this formula. So just want to kind of make you aware that I know that's, that's been going around in the past couple of weeks about that issue, and, and it seems like it, it's reaching the lawmakers ears. Continue on the revenue side, just the general overview got there between state, local and other, other revenues, just how it's broken down to get to that approximate two point one million dollar increase. The bulk of it, of course, coming on the state side. There's a little more detail getting into that two, that two million, ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred. Really, the main changes from last month are on three line items on the state side. The health insurance funding, which I mentioned, was additional fifty thousand dollars plugged in as an estimate for the funding to go with that four point six percent increase. That's going to go in effect on our, starting our January twenty, twenty-six premiums. And then our tier three money, that's the property tax relief that's associated with Act three eighty-eight. A portion of that allocation runs through the county board of education, and it has a, a county equalization component. We got that allocation back from the county board in the past month. So we're able to increase that from a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase. So that was a little bit of a benefit for us for that line item. And then the last increase we've had in the past month is on that manufacturer depreciation reimbursement. Again, that, that revenue is theirs from the state side to reimburse entities like ourselves to keep them revenue neutral for, so manufacturers can get taxed. They were at ten and a half percent at, on property taxes, getting them rationed down to six percent. So meeting with the county, county folks, they gave us reassurance that we can use updated numbers, the current year's numbers to budget with moving forward because that allocation at the state level was increased during the budget process. So we did have above, above revenue proj- uh, collections this year come in, came in actually in the past, past week. So we're able to increase that budget by a hundred and ninety thousand dollars due to that information and the actual collections we saw coming in. So, so had, had a couple of fairly significant changes on the revenue side from last month. On the expenditure side, just kind of the high points that we have in the budget now. We do have a step increase for all employees in the district. We were able to increase, pay increases for our teachers and our support staff to four percent. And we also tinkered with the teacher salary schedule a little bit so that our starting teacher pay will be increased to fifty-two thousand, which is currently at forty-nine, three twenty. So that, that keeps us very competitive in the, in the county for sure with our neighbors. Admin, we have in this budget a three percent increase. We still have extending our support staff salary schedules to twenty-eight steps to get some consistency there and a little more competitive on the top end of those schedules. I mentioned the health insurance increase, so we're annualizing our eleven point eight percent that went into effect in twenty, twenty-five, and then seven months of that four point six percent that just got added into twenty, twenty-six. And, and the seven months is because we're going to see six months of expense, expenses in this budget. And then that one month of cushion helps, helps cover us for any open enrollment changes or any, any events that may occur that allow an employee to increase their health insurance coverage and the employer costs as well. And then we've talked about the one additional teaching position at Star Elementary, and then the new one is an additional support staff position at Star Iva Middle School. That's, that's to help with, with sort of an ISS program that's been, that's worked well at, at the high school and kind of helped those students that are teetering between staying at the school and having to go to the Renaissance Academy. So adding a support staff position to help implement a program there at the request of the admin there. Had enough money from this additional revenue that came in, wanted to support the administration there and give them that position in this budget. The kind of breakdown by category, that, right there to get to the two million, ninety-seven, nine hundred, have that in front of you. Just kind of want to point out, there is a larger than normal increase on that purchase services. Large majority of that is reallocation of a couple of things, one being the, the substitute costs that we have. I mentioned last month about going with the company ESS to manage our substitute staffing services. So we had some subs in-house, so just the budgets we had in our salary and fringe accounts getting reallocated to purchase services, cost neutral swap, just, just reallocating it there. And then the other one is swapping our special education salaries and fringe and contracted services that, we had contracted services in federal funds and then salaries and fringe and general funds, swapping those. Just for ease of maintenance on, on the federal fund side, that's kind of a, a district-wide approach we're trying to take with federal funds to manage those as long as they're allowable. Again, that's another relatively cost neutral, I think, the general, general fund benefits about two thousand dollars or so in that swap. But ultimately, it's, it's a pretty cost neutral swap there. So that's just kind of driving that, what appears to be a large change on the purch- purchase services is ultimately not really an additional cost at the end of the day. And again, this is the itemized amount of the payroll expenditures, those increases, what, what constitutes that, a little over one point five million dollars. A lot of that is, is comparable to what we saw last month. I mentioned the increase for the four point six percent health insurance cost being about seventy-five thousand dollars. So can, that combined with the eleven point eight percent we're annualizing gets us around two hundred and five thousand. So that combined with the eleven point eight percent we're annualizing gets us around two hundred and five thousand. The additional, the additional staff member at, at the middle school is about fifty, fifty two thousand dollars estimated. Don't have a specific individual in that position, but that's, that's what we're estimating as, as a budgetary item there. And then another thing that's really helped us support these additional pay increases is that very last line there. Updating our incoming staff, we've had some experienced folks leaving the district and we're replacing them with a lot of, lot of young teachers in some areas that saved us a tremendous amount of money. So once you stack that difference in salary and then apply that about thirty percent on top of that for the benefits to go with it, that, that proved to be a significant increase. And then also restructuring some of our staffing and the transportation department provides significant amount of savings on the payroll again. So, so that, that's another thing that really allowed us to, to bump those pay increases up for our staff. One other thing I have on here on payroll side is, is the AIT budget. I mentioned that, that was an estimate that we had in there. That I thought it was pretty conservative. Got late, late last week, got the updated on that, on that budget, at least as of today from Anderson five. So can confirm that was a generous estimate there. We should be able to reduce that amount based on estimates we've seen. We could probably get that down closer to probably a ten thousand dollar increase. Would still be conservative there and still meet the needs of what, at least what AIT is looking at so far. So, so that's something that's encouraging moving forward, but that got that kind of at the, at the eleventh hour. But we can update that before next month's reading. On the, on the non payroll expenditures, brought you the two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar detail last month. Just want to kind of reiterate the changes or hit on the changes that we've had since last month. Cause we're now, we're at a total of five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. As I mentioned a couple of slides ago, the reallocation of the substitute costs and the special education contracted services is a big, big portion of that. That's increasing that number, again, that being relatively cost neutral on that. We did have some excess funds after all these changes. And we, we took a look at some areas that we feel like we needed some additional support are in special education. We've, we've talked about how our, our, our numbers are steadily growing in that department and those needs are, are steadily growing. So beefing up that budget to provide additional services for that, that population of students. So speech therapy, OT, PT, things of that nature, providing some additional support for those needs. And then seventeen thousand four hundred and forty eight dollars increase in our per people funding for our school budgets. That's how we've funded general fund budgets for the schools for, for years now. That amount has not been increased, at least since I've been here. So trying to provide a little extra support for those folks, for our, for our schools and for their general needs. So roughly it comes out to be about an eight dollar increase per student for each of the schools. So they are already seeing about a thirty seven hundred dollar increase in those total budgets district wide. And then adding the eight dollar per student gets us to like a total of about twenty one or so, twenty two almost for, for our school budgets to help address the needs that they have. And if you, and for the breakdown of that, if, if you have your notebook with you, it's on the very last tab. So you can see by school exactly how that, how that breakdown shakes out. And then the last piece is they, we had eight hundred and fifty dollars set aside. So part of the program requested at the middle school needing some, some software programs for those students in that, that ISS type program. Some, some licenses there for those students so they can get the instruction that they need. So allocating an extra eight hundred and fifty dollars there for, for those students at the middle school. The last thing I've got for you, just kind of wrap it up with our fund balance and how it, how it meshes with our budgets and, and past budgets and the proposed budget. So I know we've talked a lot about trying to keep a twenty five percent fund balance. Cause that's, that's a good three months for us, but also we know it's been used against us at the state level for unfunded mandates. So, so trying to keep it right at twenty five, but, but no less than that. So for this proposed budget, we would need a total fund balance of eight million fifty one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. So that'd be a, a budget, a fund balance increase of five hundred and twenty four thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars. So, but, but looking at how we, how our general fund's been performing this year, I feel fair, fairly confident that, that we'll have no problem meeting that number and being able to put that money away to make sure that we're, we're staying out of that twenty five percent. So kind of want to wrap around in, in that, I know that's kind of the end goal of how things settle out. So I want to put that in front of you as well. So with that being said, I will turn it over. Any questions you guys have?
I got maybe a couple. Though you, you was talking about the substitutes going in a different direction. Well, is this going to be a substantial increase? I mean, we spending a hundred and eighty something dollars a year on substitute.
That's, that's what we had and that, and that's, that's counted, it was the salaries and the fringe portion of that. And then now this company, they have essentially a markup that will mirror that cost. So the cost we're, we're thinking should be pretty neutral from what we've seen in the past.
We actually will be pulling from a pool, folks? They won't actually just be a?
A lot of them will be our current substitutes. They just sign up as employees. There's a lot of benefits for them. So like currently our payroll manpower is limited, if you will. So we, we won't, we haven't been able to pay them as frequently as they will with this company. They'd be able to get weekly pay. They can sign up for benefits through this company. There's, there's a lot of perks that by going this route. Talked to other neighboring districts and they, they seem to rave about the company. They, so, so we felt good about moving in that direction and, and kind of helping out ourselves, honestly.
And, and I'll just add, we've used a, a company similar to this for cafeteria subs for, for quite a while and it's worked well. So.
So this will have everyone under one umbrella for the substitutes.
Another thing is I know we had a windfall pretty much, or we, we hoping we are to be able to, to give our teachers and administrators raises and I'm all about raises. I know we, we're sitting good this year without having to raise millage, but I mean, what she's liking down the road. I mean, once you go there, you can't back up. So.
Right.
I mean, you feel real comfortable with this?
I do, I do. Cause I, cause I feel like we're pretty, pretty conservative on that state aided classrooms. And I, there's a lot of volatility in that calculation with the change of one student. So that's why I'm pretty conservative. I mean, you, you guys are aware, we've historically, we've steadily grown, but we're budgeting less than what we got in the buildings today. So I feel good about those conservative projections there. That value mill at thirty five thousand dollars is conservative. I mean, it's, it's less than what our actual value mill is right now, but it, it doesn't take but a business or two to, to leave or shut down for that to, that to shift in a small, in a small school district. So I'm conservative on, on a lot of things there that makes me feel comfortable putting this in front of you.
I just don't want us to get, I mean, like I said, I'm all for it. I just don't want to have this conversation a couple of years down the road. So what we gonna do now? And I've been there. I mean, I've been there twenty seven years. We've had them conversations.
Right.
But anyway, I just want to make sure before we pull trigger on this that we got it covered.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. The substitutes, I just want to make sure if we're going with this company, will our substitutes still receive the same pay? I know that we pay a fee.
Yes, yeah, the, the rates that the substitutes receive will be the, be the same. Yes, they will not see a reduction or anything like that. So we, we feel like it's, it's only a positive for our substitutes.
Who does the discipline for the substitutes? The district still have authority?
Yes, yes. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we, we have ultimate authority to tell them. If we have, we have, a principal has a bad experience with a sub, we can contact our direct rep located here in Anderson saying, we don't want this person in our building. They'll, they'll remove them immediately. So we, we have the ultimate authority of who comes in our building.
And then I know that the middle school intervention support, additional staff member there.
Yes.
I see that you have that combined with the cost of the elementary teacher at Star. Could you give us a breakdown of?
Yes.
Separated out?
Yes, I, I did that for presentation sake, but I do have that for you on tab six. Should be the, should be third page, second line from the bottom. That's that fifty two thousand eight ninety four, forty. That's my best guess at a cost with a guesstimate on the health insurance cost that this employee may select. So that, there could be some, some change once the dust settles, of course, but that's, that's my projection at this point in time.
This person's being used for just intervention, like academic intervention?
Well, is, we're trying to mirror the, the ROR program at Crescent where it's kind of that, that in between step of trying not to have to send a child to the Renaissance Academy and so providing that in-house support. And I, I think, I looked at our Renaissance Academy numbers this year, right now we have three high school kids there. And I think the ROR program at the high school has allowed us to keep more students in house and make progress with them. And so bringing this to the middle school, right now we have nine middle school students at the Renaissance Academy. And, and I feel like implementing this program at the middle school will allow us to keep those students with us. We just feel like we're making greater strides with them in our buildings. And because I, I think we'll see some cost savings from the Renaissance Academy doing this because we pay per day that a child's there. So we feel like we serve them better keeping them in our building. The high school has started a good model that the, the middle school wants to implement. So that's really kind of that full picture. I think the way the high school runs it more is one person is more your academic support and the other one is more your behavioral support. And so that's what you get with the two people there.
It would just be two total positions that this is just adding one?
Yes, because we already have what has traditionally been the ISS position we're hiring for yet right now. And so that would be one of them. And then it's just as, this is the support, academic support side.
Okay. I think that's, that's all I have right now.
Anybody else?
Kind of going along with, I think the way Mr. Rock was, was thinking. I mean, no millage increase is huge. What if your daily membership or worship or weighted pupil average is like last year's budget? What is the, I'm trying to gauge the risk.
That cost difference, I think I tried to, I think if I have, if I'm looking at it correctly, the enrollment by itself, when I tried to measure, to measure that just by itself is about a two hundred and seventy five thousand dollar increase of that effect in our state aided classrooms formula. So that, that increase, oh, I don't know if I can go backwards. Can you go to the budget factors for me, Logan? Right there. Yeah. So that increase, that sixty five weighted pupil unit increase should, is ballpark two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars is what is getting generated by, by that many students. So if you break it down per student, it's, it could be a big swing for sure. So that's why definitely don't want, I'm a little hesitant to project growth, even though we've seen growth for several years now. Still hesitant to, to project continued growth.
Cause if there's one point, if you just look at kind of general, there's one point four million more in state aid, right? There'd be one point five increase in payroll related. And those are, those are pretty solid, right? Well, you, you pretty well know what those are going to be. So.
Yes.
So I'm trying to gauge how far would you have to be off of a projection in order to be, you know?
Say that one more time?
How far off would your projections have to be in order for, for us to be negatively impacted?
It's a tough question. Um, I, I don't know the exact number exactly. I mean, but I guess just the, the general approach. Just budgeting less than what we expect to see. So not trying to get too far, too ahead of our skis, if you will. So every revenue projection I have, it is slightly less than what I would actually expect it to be. But there's just, I don't know, there's just so much in that calculation that, that kind of scares me to, from going to the positive just because you never know what statewide enrollment is going to do. You don't know what this, what the extra waitings are going to end up being with this study, this committee that ends up deciding what this formula looks like. So, so yeah, I, I do feel, I do feel like this is a good, safe, conservative number that we're using.
I like that you have that much confidence in it being that conservative, you know, so.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
I've talked with some other school board members across the state at some, of course, other districts. But where their bottom line is being negatively impacted because of the way the formula has played out with this new state aided classroom stuff.
Yes.
So I, I don't know their numbers like I do ours.
Right.
But how, how would that affect them negatively versus us? We seem to be coming out okay.
Yes, I, I think we're in a unique spot because we have all the factors working in our favor. I mean, I was just reading an update Greenwood fifty. I, again, not knowing their numbers, supposed to be additional money put in the budget to support their teacher increases and they're losing a million dollars in that specific lineup.
Yes.
So I think, again, I just know Anderson three's numbers, but I would imagine, I'm guessing, it sounds like if somebody's not growing at the rate the state is, they're getting negatively impacted anyways from the way the formula is set up. But even more so with the way these waitings are for charter schools, that they're getting, they're getting your base cost for a student plus one point two five for a brick and mortar charter school or point six five additional for a virtual charter school. The intent behind that was to help, help them out because they don't have property tax base to pull from. And that worked from the start because ultimately the large, a large majority of the, the funding was a whole harmless of what they were getting the year before. But now as new money is getting added in and running through those factors, that we're finding out that those factors are not where they need to be to, to have an equitable distribution of funds.
Well, I just, I just know there's some folks that are, I mean, being out of shape and I can understand.
Yeah.
Just because it, it feels like square peg, round hole. And it's like, what are we trying to do here at a state level? When we're all, all these public schools, we're all trying to do the same thing. But when, when the, when the formula don't work out and you got some that benefit from it, some that don't, to me that's, it's like, man, what are we doing here? I, I just, I don't always understand or get what they're doing there with that.
There, there's people still trying to figure out this formula, how to calculate their own district's allocations. And we're what, three, four years into this?
Yes.
Three years into this.
How much input do they give you guys? I mean, you know, I'd want the boots on the ground, be telling me if it's working or not. Why don't, why don't they call y'all in down there unless you give them a little lesson on budgeting?
Yeah, I mean, and I guess, and I guess we've just been in the fortunate situation where all our factors move in the right direction. So for ours, on our end, it looks like it's working out great. I mean, the, the additional revenue that we got generated for, I don't have in front of me, that the House put in just from the new money is pretty close to what a fifteen hundred dollar teacher raise, but that's because we got index tax paying ability going down. We got weighted pupil units going up. Everything's working in our favor. So, so maybe it's working right when things are going good. But when it's going bad, it's going twice as bad.
Well, that's the only thing that concerns me is when you get news like this right here, it seems to be too good to be true sometime. You wonder what's coming.
Yes.
Doing them title ways.
The encouragement piece is that, at least on the House side, they were pretty quick to, to put the Band-Aid in for that add on waiting for, for the virtual charter schools to reduce that down to point three five. And that gets that distribution that we've seen the past two years comparable, at least from a, I think it's about a seventy five, twenty five split instead of forty five, fifty five. So, so that, I think, I guess it's more in the ballpark, but that doesn't fix the core issue. And that's what I think the, that committee is going to be tasked with.
What they say is the, is the House is coming back in a couple of weeks?
So the, so the conference committee report is scheduled, tentatively scheduled for May the twenty eighth. So that's, that's kind of.
Know more about how concrete this is then or are we still guessing?
That's a tentative date. So, uh, yeah, I'd, I'd hope, I'd hope that we'd have something then. But if, hopefully if that, that Band-Aid stays.
I just don't believe you lie. I know, that's what I'm saying. And we still don't know nothing.
How many total mills on everything we got in our district right now?
Uh, operationally, we're one ninety point four five debt, yeah, debt service, we're at thirty eight. So that's one twenty, or two twenty eight.
I was going to say two twenty eight, but I was, I read it today. So I wanted to make sure I was reading it right.
That's right.
What's most other districts in the county?
Oh. I, I don't, I'd have to get, get back to you on that. I mean, I, I think.
Are we still the lowest?
We're the second highest.
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not the lowest.
It used to be the lowest.
That's, I, that sounds right, I believe. We're second highest, especially once you. That's, I, that sounds right, I believe, we're second highest, um, especially once you.
No more of that.
So yes.
If you combine, if you combine operations and debt millage, we're the second highest.
Yes.
I, I think you.
Is two the highs?
I think two was, cause they have, they have standalone millage for their career center.
They are, they're at 238.
Backer in that end, that gets them higher.
I, 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 I think when you look at millage though, you've got to remember that the value of our mill is a lot different than the value of Anderson Wins Mill and Anderson Five's Mill. And so when, when Anderson One and Anderson Five's Mill is valued at twice as much as yours.
Yeah, and Anderson Two's, if I'm not mistaken, is in the, at least on the debt service side, they're around 70s or 70 something. Um, and we're, we're, we just climbed up to 57. We just, just moved up that high. We've been around or at, or under 50 for a while now, but we're just now starting to move up a little bit. Um, so.
That's where your mass confusion comes to the general public too. They don't understand millage.
Right.
They look at it as.
And, and that, and that's why they chastise everybody because they think everybody's on an equal playing field and it's not.
Yes, that's a lot of factors go into it for sure.
That's right.
I'm gonna bring up one more thing. Did, have y'all looked at, or maybe, um, this is kind of off the back of what you said, Mr. Watt? Just over a 10-year period, how many students have we increased? And in comparison to the number of teachers that we've increased, the number of administrators? Or do y'all look at that every five-year period, 10-year period?
I've got it tr- I mean, we have it tracked for, I think it's about 10 years. Um, so yeah, we, we do track it. Uh, I mean, a lot of the, one of the benefits, I guess, of being in a, in a small district, we're able to look at each school on an individual basis and see what those specific needs are and things like that. So, um, trends are important, yes, but, um, we're able to take a little more of a granular approach, being so small and look at them on an individual basis. So, um, so all that to say, yes, we do track it, but, um, it, it kind of varies with what the need, given need may be year to year. Uh, but definitely try to stay consistent with our ratios for sure, um, as we, as we track those.
I looked at it, you know, over a 10-year period, we've increased 123 students. And, you know, 12 teachers, four admin, these are additional. So I think it's worth looking at because I want us to be able to pay our teachers a reasonable raise each year. And keeping up with so that we don't have to cut eventually.
Right.
And I guess I think that is important to look at.
That's right.
Well, well, eh, just, just to, to kind of piggyback on that, because I, I think that our board needs to be commended about something. When you look at the number of teachers we've added, uh, I, I know when I started as superintendent, and this is my ninth year, you all committed to small class size in our elementary schools. And so those additional teachers, uh, probably have grown more than our population because we've tried to keep early childhood at 15, 15 to one. And surrounding districts, I can tell you don't have 15 to one in first grade and second grade. So I, I, I commend that, but I also want to kind of, that's something that we put in place and have been, I think, can be proud of. Is adding those teachers, and we use some federal funds to do that and strategically, but that to me is to complement our district with that.
I, I agree, because it's been a 4.9% increase in students and 8.8 in teachers. So I think that does, um, but it also points out in the admin, 33.3% increase. So I think while we're trying to keep our classrooms sized smaller, that's very important. I think we have to look at the other things as well to see, are we putting too many admins or do we have enough? I think looking at over, over the 10-year span has helped me to see some things that maybe I didn't realize. By looking at it, because I don't ever want us to have to cut positions or not be able to give our teachers raises each year. Because I think we all know that it happens in the classroom and want to make sure, you know, that we're being good stewards of the money so that we can give raises each year.
And, and I'll just, I'll just say to that, I, I think, um, the, the things our administrators are dealing with in our buildings today, especially since COVID, um, I think point to the need for additional administrative staff. Because we're just called on to do so many things. I, I don't ever mind looking at the numbers, but I think when you look at everything we're having to do, um, at every level, it's, it's an investment we need to strongly consider keeping if we can.
And I agree with that. And we may not have had enough to begin with, and that may be why the percentage is higher. I just think it's worth, you know, having that information in front of us and looking at so that we're not looking back later and saying, you know, we maybe should have explored some of it.
Do want to kind of bring to your attention a bill that got, um, passed last Thursday. Uh, it's a Senate bill, 78, credit for work experience. Uh, so we, we have some employees that go through the SE Create Program. Some of them start as paraprofessionals and, um, work towards getting their teaching certificate. So this got, so this bill got passed and what it does is allows, um, individuals like that who are seeking a teacher's certificate to use, um, prior work experience to count towards their experience level there. So, um, for every two years of relevant, um, non-teaching experience can, can now count towards teaching experience. So you got a paraprofessional that's worked for four years, they start off two years of experience, um, in the classroom. So that's, that's could be something that I don't know is gonna hit us directly or what the implementation's gonna look like. Um, but it could be a nice, nice benefit for our folks, um, for those going through a program like that to get that addition, additional teaching, um, experience and get compensated for that rather than having to start off with zero years of experience on the teacher scale. So I thought that was a nice, nice perk that could, could benefit some staff, um, immediately in our district, so. But as always, we'll, we'll keep you updated as developments occur.
I don't know how to make it stop. I can turn, turn it down. There you go. Cause it's on silent. I promise you that.
I'm assuming, assuming that's a storm, it's not an amber.
Yeah, it's a storm, yep. I don't think we have to take any formal actions.
I don't think we did.
Our policy doesn't truly call for two readings, so, um.
Yep. Does anybody else got any questions for Matthew, when he's here, cause he's the answer man? Thank you, buddy. I appreciate it. Yes. Put your hand on.
We'll shift gears a little bit and, uh, take a look at our current year general fund. Uh, so through the, through the month of April, our revenues exceed our expenditures by $2,751,392. Um, so continuing to be in a good spot about where we've seen ourselves, um, throughout the course of the year. Um, very strong, strong year. A, a tick behind where we were last year, uh, based on a bunch of factors, but, uh, feel good about where we are. Um, revenue's coming in as, as projected. Uh, we do have a timing difference when looking at, um, the current year and, and last year. Um, so right now, on paper, we're about, uh, seven, 750 or about $800,000 or so, um, behind last year. But we did have a timing difference on our tier-two property tax relief revenue, which is related to your home state exemptions. Uh, $334,000 was received in May this year where we received that money, uh, in April last year. So had a little bit of a timing difference there. Manufacturing depreciation reimbursement, I mentioned that, uh, coming in that you'll see the full amount in May. Uh, but that's gonna be, uh, above budget for us, um, about $200,000, uh, to the good for us on that specific line item. Again, I mentioned on the, the state aided classroom, still waiting on that state, statewide number that'll ultimately affect our final allocation. Um, at our last update, we're about $580,000 above the budget on that number. Um, and, and really that's the last piece to determine where we ultimately settle out. But still don't expect a ton of variation, um, from, from where we're projecting right now based on those preliminary 135-day numbers at the state level. Um, property tax revenue is still, still on track to finish above budget where we expected to be. Definitely aligning with that $35,000 per mill. Um, so definitely feel, that helps reinforce, um, where we're budgeting that number for sure. Um, we've already exceeded our, our current line item there and all those, those property taxes will continue rolling in, um, deep into the summer. So feel good about, um, how we're sitting from a property tax standpoint. Expenditures, um, those are very consistent, what we've seen. I know we spent a lot of time talking about the differences, especially on the purchase services side between the instructional software. Um, and we have food service fringe being budgeted this, this go-around and things like that causing some, a little bit of difference on the expenditures. But everything else is pretty well lining up. Uh, AIT, another update on that. So we got the update on the budget side that it was to the good. And then the early projections on AIT for the current year appear to be on track, uh, to be to the good. Um, looks like as of right now, coming in approximately $20,000 under budget for our portion of AIT. So, uh, very encouraged by that. So, uh, Dr. Estes does a great job, uh, managing, um, all things AIT, but she does, she does keep a close eye on, on the funds there. So, uh, commend her for, for her hard work on that for sure. Um, other than that, general fund's looking pretty good. Feel good about, um, kind of how we finishing up. As I mentioned during the fund balance portion, um, looking like we're prepped to finish strong. Any general fund related question? All right, I can give you a quick update on sales tax. So in April, uh, we received allocation of $324,386.83, which is the second largest allocation we've ever gotten. Not, it's very unusual for the month. You see prior to this year, the largest collection was under $250,000. So, um, it's, is, and it was more than the prior year's Christmas spending that we typically receive in February. So not sure what people were buying in February, but they bought a lot of it, so. So, so it was coming in, coming in really, really well for us. Um, and we're, we had a historical year last year and on, on track to, to beat it. We're, um, tracking about 8% above what we collected last year. Um, so of that, $324,064.87 automatically went straight to debt service to service that and keep that millage, uh, constant. And then $259,509.46 was available for capital use, um, capital use allocation there. Um, so yeah, very surprised that that one, um, continues to come in well, well above budget, so. Yeah, can get for us, so. Any questions on sales tax? Thank you. Thank y'all.
Dr. Nixon, operations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start off, I think I told you about six months ago, whenever we finally got Title IV and Title V approved, I would give you guys copies of those, uh, of those plans in their entirety. And it took the State Department quite a bit of time this year to get those plans approved and get the money allocated. So Title IV and Title V has been approved. The links there will take you directly to those plans. Both of those plans together, um, equate to about $192,000. We use those to fund our stream programs within the district, uh, salaries, a portion of salaries at the elementary schools for stream teachers. Uh, Laura Beth Smith, a portion of her salary to coordinate stream within the district. And then a lot of the money goes towards supplies and materials. And I was at the band performance, um, last week and Mr. Waters actually mentioned the new equipment and things like that that he'd been able to, to purchase using these funds. And he just sent in another purchase order for two pieces of instruments that I have no clue what they are, but they're important to him. So that money's going to the students directly in students' hands, which is the grassroots design of all federal programs. So thank you for your support for those programs. Um, as well as the, uh, last board meeting, I told you once we got the recording, that's posted on the website. By federal law, we have to make it available to the public, make it available to our board as well. So if you get an opportunity and would like to watch that recording, it's available on our webpage. And then finally, our CTE, we're going a different route this year. Uh, we're having a virtual advisory council meeting. Our programs have gone so well with our federal programs meeting that we have that, um, we're trying to, to branch out in some of our other programs. A, a lot of times we get input from people that, that say it's very difficult for them to take the time off work and get away from work and make the travel, travel time plus the meeting time, they'll have three to four hours potentially tied up. So we've had, had some people that said they would be more likely to serve and more likely, likely to attend if that meeting was offered virtually. So if any board member would like to do that, it'll be from 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock on May the 22nd. And we'll be glad to send you that calendar invite as well so you can attend virtually if you so desire. Just let myself know or Ms. Hip know and we'll make sure that you get the invitation. Anybody have any questions about that first slide, federal programs or the CTE meeting? Right. Some projects, the last board meeting, I think we, we talked about what all we're gonna try to tackle, uh, tackle this summer. And we've got lofty goals of trying to get a lot of work done. Uh, remind you that everything in red is satisfied from the safety and security grant that was funded, um, whenever we submitted that to the State Department. And all the other items are coming from, um, combination of several funding streams. We've tried to look at the projects and the funding holistically at this point in time. And combined, we got very creative in combining some, some year-end budgets to, to make a pot of money to try to satisfy as many of these things as, as possible. I'm very excited to tell you that after the board meeting last time, I feel very, very confident we're gonna be able to do everything that was provided to the board meeting, uh, this summer for all of those projects, including the sewer line. I kept that one highlighted in blue because that was questionable. Uh, we're gonna be able to do two, two-man holes, uh, distances between two-man holes. Based on the cammering of that line, that's probably gonna get us where we need to be and satisfy a lot of the issues we've been having with the sewer, um, system at Ida Elementary School. The only things on the list or on the slides that were provided this time that weren't captured last time. After a walk-through at Star Ida Middle School, which was after the last board meeting, uh, drainage repair at car rider entrance, there've been some issues where the, um, drain lines have been crushed over time. Water coming out and starting to erode under some of the concrete, so trip hazard as well as it's just an eyesore on that end of the school. So in a walk-through with admin, uh, that was one of the areas they wanted targeted as well as the car rider lines and curbing. It's time, some of those have become a little bit worn and very difficult to see those lines. So if you've been through the car rider lines, the way they stack, they, they do a wonderful job trying to get the kids out of the school as fast as possible. But if those lines are not detailed, then, then it makes it a lot more cumbersome for them to be able to stack cars and get that done. In addition to those two that I had the star beside at Star Ida Middle School, there was another one that's come up recently. Uh, our band has grown exponentially in numbers and the tower and the space that they have is very, very limited. Mr. Waters has asked us to pursue and consider moving the tower up the hill into the parking lot. Um, and having a better view and also regaining this, the, um, surface area that they need for the increased numbers in band. We're pursuing that right now and we're waiting on, waiting on some additional quotes. So hopefully if those numbers come within, come within budget, we'll be able to do that work as well. Anybody got any questions about the summer projects?
Dr. Nixon, I had, probably should have brought this up when Mr., we were going over the financial.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moore. Wanted to see if we get a detailed accountlessness, easy to go over the presentations that you have of the summer projects. I think district's doing a great job with the summer projects and the things that each schools need. But would like to see how much money of the one penny sales tax that's went towards security, technology, capital improvements. Because we see the projects, but it's hard to know what money does that come from? Is it coming from a security grant that we have or is it coming from the one penny sales tax? And so I don't know if that's something that y'all provided the board before, I think that would be good.
By the June meeting, we'll have a, we'll have a spreadsheet and a breakdown by funding source and by funding sheet. Like I said, we got a little bit creative with some operational money and some safety and security money and some paint budget money and things like that that we've massaged, which I think if it's allocated, we need to spend it as long as there's need within the school. So, but we'll be able to provide you a much more detailed account at the June meeting.
That would be great, because if the numbers are right, we brought in $19.3 million since the, um, beginning of the one penny sales tax. And I think it'd be good to know, you know, all the different things that we've been able to do. Cause without that money, we won't be able to do those things.
Absolutely. And the board reinstating Pago, that's really helped out a lot and made a lot of these projects, um, financially viable here at the end of the year as well. So we'll, we'll work on getting you a detailed account of that, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, um, the, the, the item I put on the budget, I had talked to you all last month and, and put it in my Friday email about us offering the public a question and answer time on the budget before we do the hearing in June. And the date, um, that I sent you was potentially May 28th from 5:00 to 6:30. Um, having you all available would do it as a special call board meeting. And really just a time for the community to come in and ask questions. Uh, what I was gonna do in the next week or so is do a video that, that Dylan will put out, um, telling about the opportunity, directing them to the first reading of the budget if they want to go back and watch it. And then coming in just to ask any questions that they have. This was recommended by Mr. Davis, who's our county board member, that we give the community an opportunity to come in and ask questions. Because as you know, when we do the budget hearing, they can make comments, but the community really cannot ask questions, questions. The time came in because that's a Wednesday night and so starting at 5:00 and going to 6:30, the. The time came in, because that's a Wednesday night, and so starting at five and going to six thirty, the idea is that if someone wants to go to church, they still have time. Also, in my mind, it's kind of a drop-in thing, we'll have the budget presentation loaded, but it's really just to answer questions that people come in with. And so if you all are good with that date and time, then I'll advertise it, and we'll also post it appropriately, it'd be posted as a special call board meeting with the purpose of community Q and A on the budget.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, appendix.
The only other thing I draw your attention to is just a letter we received from a, a pastor in Anderson County. Um, last year, he actually went to, uh, Dr. Kelly in Anderson Five and asked her about potentially changing the calendar to not have spring break, fall on Easter. And she brought that to the calendar committee, she also brought it to all of us, and I went to some of our local pastors and asked for input, and they, they concurred that they would like to see, um. Spring break and Easter not be the same time, and this year, it really fell where Easter was so late, it made a lot of sense, but it's just kind of, uh, thanking us for considering that. Talking about how they feel like it made a difference in church attendance, so I thought it was worth sharing with you all and having it in the record. Yes, sir.
We have a second, I want to say. Thank all y'all.